Our City Council meeting, this is Tuesday, March 27, 2018. I wish I could say it was 6:00 PM, but it's not. It looks like about 6:25. Welcome, one and all, to the Isle of Palms City Council. And please know that both the press and public were duly notified on our meeting in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act. You are welcome to join me in prayer to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and Lord, we thank you for this slice of heaven we call the Isle Palms. We are meeting today to conduct matters of business. Guide our hearts and minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought and speech. impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach successful conclusion. Thank you for being the source of our guidance today. Please look over those who protect our nation and our community. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Marie, may we have roll call.
Yes. Councilmember Bell.
Here.
Councilmember Cannon.
Here.
Councilmember Bren.
Here.
Councilmember Kinghorn.
Here.
Councilmember Lloyd.
Here.
Councilmember Rice.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Mayor Carroll.
Here.
Administrator Tucker.
Here.
And Attorney House.
Here.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, next on our agenda, reading the Journal of previous meetings. We've got three regular council meeting of February 27, special council meeting March 14, and special council meeting on March 20. Do I have a motion to approve all three?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion, changes? Here are none? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Thank you very much. Citizens' comments. First on the agenda is Seal Kids Swim Auction on Saturday, August 11, September 8, 2018. Do we have somebody here speaking?
I don't think there is.
Okay. And the other one was the South Carolina Aquarium Turtle Trek 5K Sunset Run. Both of these things have been for past several years. I'd actually like to have a motion to approve these as annual city-sponsored events.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 So moved, all right. We also had a presentation for somebody on single-use plastic bags, but they found out we were already doing that, so that's been deleted from our agenda.
Although it does have straws.
Again, there's, I'm looking at Mount Pleasant. Reports from standing committees, ways and means.
Are we doing more citizens' comments?
Any other citizens?
Any other citizens' comments, I'm sorry. We've got lots of them, I'm sure. All right. Yes, ma'am. Please come forward.
Come right up here.
We're going to ask you to state your name and address, and thank you for coming.
Hi, I'm Catherine Main, and I'm the Executive Director of the East Cooper Land Trust, and I live actually in Mount Pleasant, but we represent the Isle of Palms in our territory. The East Cooper Land Trust is a nonprofit organization, and I met with Mayor Carroll and talked about some ways that we would love to be partnering with the City of Isle of Palms, you know, just via being on your website and some other things so that we can conserve land when there is land available to conserve in the area. I've left a couple of brochures in the back that tell more about what we do, and I encourage y'all to learn more about what we do because it is a great partnership that we can do with the municipalities and using private funding to partner together, and we can conserve more land. So I just wanted to say that today. Thank you.
Yeah, you just did a bunch of marshlands out here on the backsides of Sullivan's Island.
We did, we did. We conserved almost 400 acres over there, Conk Creek on the Ben Sawyer Causeway. So we hope to do more projects like that in and around this area. So, thank you.
Thank you. Citizens' comment, more, please.
Hello, I'm Rusty Streetman, 4004 Palm Boulevard. Wanted to speak out in favor of the managed beach parking and parallel parking on Palm Boulevard, and the managed beach parking being year-round. Right now, as all of you know, the current signage indicates May 15 through September 15, and I would definitely be in favor of seeing that removed during this year-round. The reality is, is that our current season on Isle of Palms, and I've been living here for well over 30 years, but, you know, in reality, we don't have much of an off-season anymore. I mean, it really starts beginning around Easter, goes right on through November, and so typically, I mean, you can look at December, January, February being sort of off months for us, and quite honestly, I don't think that this would be a real issue if we decided to go to a year-round managed plan for the parking on the interior streets. The proposed parallel parking that's on Palm will definitely decrease the parking there, the traffic, basically by 50% or more, and as far as the available non-beachside parking for non-residents. That in itself is going to force incursion into the neighborhood areas. So I think that's even more of a reason we should be thinking about having managed parking year-round. And why wouldn't we have a consistent plan that recognizes that? If you look at the growth that we're having in Mount Pleasant, we're going to continue to have traffic that comes over here from Mount Pleasant, it's going to be more and more of that, so that rapid growth is going to be an issue. Also, visitor seasonal and non-seasonal demand will continue to grow and impact the residential areas of Isle of Palms, so I'm definitely in favor of both of those. And if you look at it, like downtown Charleston, you don't just park in residential areas down there. I mean, you park where you're allowed to park, and that's it, so I'm in favor of that. One other thing I did want to mention is because I saw coyote management is on the agenda tonight, too. Living at 4004 Palm, I have a kind of a view of the beach and the dunes in my area, and at 7:00 this morning, I saw something that might be an effective coyote management tool. There was an English pointer actually chasing a coyote across my backyard at 7:00 this morning. Quite a sight to see. Unfortunately, I didn't have the iPhone handy, and I posted on Isle of Palms Neighbors, and I thought people would think I was crazy for posting it, maybe lying or something, but someone fessed up and said, "Yeah, that was my dog out there on the beach with my husband." And the coyote, the coyote was running 45 miles an hour, and that pointer wasn't far behind it, let me tell you.
Thank you.
Sir?
Yes.
Can I have your comment?
I want?
Your printed comments?
Any other comments, please? Yes, sir.
I'm Bob Miller, 3 Fairway Village Lane. I'm here with Judy Gogle, 8 Summer Dunes Lane. We're members of the IOP Coyote Control Coalition, as you probably know, and we're made up of six citizens who share a common objective of educating and informing both citizens and vacationers alike, influencing Wild News Community Association, and hopefully influencing the City of IOP as much as we can, as well as reducing the number of coyotes on the island. So that's kind of our objective and mission. We have 280 citizens now who've signed our petition to control coyotes, so it's become pretty much a groundswell. We'd like to express our appreciation for putting, for you, the council, putting an island-wide, multi-pronged coyote management plan on the agenda for a vote, and we ask each of you for your favorable vote on this important public safety proposal as put forward by Councilwoman Bell and passed unanimously at the Public Safety Meeting, March 5. Furthermore, we stress that the plan be implemented immediately because of the cycle of the coyotes right now, the pups are being born and they'll be more aggressive, and that the plan include a comprehensive communication plan in using signs, printed information for residents and renters alike, and finally, an overhaul of the website so it's consistent on the issue of coyotes. Thank you very much, and thanks for all your work on this.
Thank you. Any other public comments, please?
Two.
Yes, sir, come on. We'll get to everybody. Comments are all going to come first.
My name is Garrett Kraus. I live on Intercoastal Court, and I'm building a house on Waterway, right where all the boat trailers park all summer long, and I'm hoping that council does not allow overflow parking from the marina to park all the way down the golf course. It is, as the public safety report says, it is hazardous for travelers, for me driving home and back, for walking, for anybody in that area when all these big boat trailers are parked. Got to find another solution than let them overflow park in our residential neighborhood, whether it's Intercoastal Court, or Waterway Boulevard, or all the other streets around the marina. I think we've got to really come to a conclusion and make that safer in summer, especially on the weekends. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next one. Come on up, please.
I'd like to just speak a little bit about parking, the parking plan, like was mentioned before. John Reagan Walters? I feel like everybody knows me already, so they've heard me pound items so many times, everybody's gotten tired of hearing me. But anyway, on Palm Boulevard, you know, I bear the brunt of it. I've lived here all my life, I know the parking problem. The parking on the side streets isn't a, is not a problem, but hey, be proactive. But that's a tax also on the residents when you start having this ticket thing, the buy, books of tickets and all. If they're still doing that, that needs to go away, particularly if you go on year-round. There's no reason we should be taxing our citizens so to keep people from Mount Pleasant from parking. We're taxing the wrong guy. The guys from Mount Pleasant are the ones who need to be taxed. And as far as parking on Palm, like you said, like was mentioned earlier, we have a year-round season anymore. I don't get much of a break. I mean, I may get a few weeks in January if it snows or something, but other than that, I mean, it's just constant. You know, you start with seaweed and everything else, people are out there, and we need to start looking at, how about give the residents a break? Okay, we're giving you all this parking in the summer, but from mid to late September till May, no parking on Palm. That's it. And, I mean, we're, right now, we're providing what, double the parking that we're required to? I mean, we need to start playing hardball with the county and the state. I mean, we're putting out money to build a boardwalk and to maintain restrooms and all. I mean, and what are they giving, and then they're giving us a hassle about parking? We ought to cut back to the bare minimum and say, "Okay, now you want to play ball? We're going to do the bare minimum for one summer and let you see what it's like." And then, we've got their attention. And because at that point, then maybe they'll start giving us the money we need, but as long as we keep saying, "Oh, we're so sorry," but they're not going to come and give us anything, and they're going to keep pressing for more and more and more, like they always done. So, you know, we've got to stand up and be, you know, put on your big boy pants and tell them no. You know, we're not going to have everybody in the county and not everybody in the state that's here on Isle of Palms every weekend. I mean, I get sick of it. So, and also, it's the same thing with the trailers on Waterway and on 41st, too. They should be, okay, right now, it's overflow parking for the marina. My understanding, the marina was there to provide island residents access to the water. Okay, well, we're having overflow parking of people who don't live on the island on 41st and Waterway. So I say if we're going to be letting everybody else use it, that should be no overflow parking if anybody doesn't live on the island. If you live on the island, okay. If you go down there and it's full, the island residents should be able to get access, and that overflow parking would be only for island residents. But generally speaking, should be no parking on Waterway or 41st for visitors. I mean, we've got to start looking, once again, we need to look at what's good for the citizens. And then, when council starts losing view of that, we see what happens last election. So, I mean, I hope that y'all, any of you who are wavering on the parking thing and think we aren't nice, we're too nice, I mean, not nice enough, I think you need to think twice because that's, you know, we're at a point where we can't have people representing us who don't think for the island, you know, don't think, you know, use their lily pulpit for the island residents. And we need to be, we have, we need to get on our state legislator, who lives right here on the island, and somebody needs to be talking to him. I mean, he's an influence, someone has influence at the state level. I mean, what are they going to do to us? Are they going to come back and say, "Oh, well, we're not going to give you the money that we gave you for that restroom," or they didn't give us any, or the boardwalk, or, "Oh, we're not going to give you the money that we're supposed to be giving the municipalities that we're not giving you already." I mean, make them, you know, let's push them. I'm going, you know, because what we're doing now is not working, being Mr. Nice Guy. And then, one more thing on the coyotes before I leave, but, you know, every dead horse needs one more beating, so here we go. The, you know, the coyotes, you know, when we get these DNR guys and these co-post coyote experts who are telling us how coyotes can swim, well, yeah, sure they can swim, but how are they walking through two miles of pluff mud? I mean, take your dog and throw him out in those marsh and see if he makes it home. But the coyotes, we need to, we're wasting time with traps. They don't work, they're not effective. We need to have active hunting. And what, have them tell us what the dens look like, so that someone's walking their dog, say, "Hey, that looks like a den site." You go look over there, you know, instead of beating pots and pans in your backyard and having them laugh at you, you know, find what, when people know what the den sites look like, nesting areas, what it looks like, that's how people do your hunting, any kind of hunting you do, you find out what the habitat is. Okay, and then, when you find something that looks like it might be a good den site, go look at it. If it's one, it's got babes in it, you know, you take them out, you bash their skulls, whatever you've got to do, but get rid of them. I mean, that's what, that's going to have, we're going to get eradicated coyotes. We don't eradicate them by putting a trap up and hoping they walk down that one little path. We've got to, if you're going to trap, you at least got to know what's the habitat and put the traps around the habitat. Right now, we're not doing that, we're just willy-nilly putting them out where we've had sightings, and, you know, they don't spend all day sitting in one spot.
Thank you, John. Got a little handout for you.
So nice, really.
That's not 21 pages. Those are helpful, man.
Marie's going to love you on this one.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I got two.
There you go. Thank you.
An extra.
My name is Scott Pierce, and I live on 4 Ninth Avenue. First of all, I want to thank you for considering changing the parking on the island to improve safety and reduce unsafe volumes of traffic. I've got two items I'd like to talk to you about. First one is regarding year-round resident parking. There is a solution to consider that is in practice in other communities that could address both, one, visitors and relatives, and, two, year-round residential parking. Instead of day passes, issue three to four resident guest placards that are issued with resident parking passes and can be used any time of year for guests in resident parking areas. This can be three, four, arbitrary number, you can give them 10, who cares? This allows the freedom of any resident to use the respective spaces of their house. Most homes already have public beach parking in front of their home and can accommodate a few cars in their yards and driveways. Add up to four more per residence, and that should address the vast majority of events and holidays. Okay, second item, and that's what the packet is about here. We enjoy, it's basically to ask the council to please consider parallel parking island-wide. Let's not restrict it to just 21 to 41st. And I've got some attachments here. We enjoy seeing the surfers and families coming to the beach. We welcome them parking on Ninth Avenue, just not 39 large vehicles and trucks in a dangerous row, packed like sardines on a stretcher road unloading in the middle of the street while traffic is moving. See the pictures. Personally witnessed accidents, strollers being backed up on, kids leaping out of the way, pets being pulled, and elderly couples nearly being hit. This is purely a safety issue, and to wait until we have injury, more property damage, or worse, with a growing volume of traffic is, in my opinion, avoidable. We've got 5,000 of our new closest friends building houses across the bridge. The SC DOT already has written restrictions of perpendicular parking that states, and I've attached it, this came directly from SC DOT, I did not make this up or anything. It says, quote, "Only parallel parking is permitted on state highway systems right-of-way unless the department specifically permits otherwise. Parking other than parallel parking increases the accident potential due to vehicles backing into the roadway while under the restraint of limited site distances created by vehicles in adjacent spaces," end quote. And see the pictures again, please. It goes on, "At no time shall 90-degree parking be permitted. We hope the council will consider the guidelines, pictures, and safety for all of our beach covers and residents. Thank you for your consideration."
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Can you check the microphone? I can't hear it moving.
Okay.
Arnold Carrick, 5102 Palm Boulevard. Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. I am here tonight to support the adoption of the Isle of Palms parking plan on a year-round basis. As a longtime resident of Isle of Palms, I'm encouraged to see a city council that is looking to the future and beginning to implement measures that will help manage the rapidly increasing onslaught of cars and people to the beaches. Almost every day, there's a story in the media about the number of people moving to the Charleston area on a daily basis, or a story about housing units under construction, or as in recent days, an article about cane hoy and 5,000 houses to be built up in the cane hoy area. It is logical to assume that most of these new arrivals to our area will want to visit the beach. Unless proactive measures are taken to plan for this surge in population, there will not be even a smidgen of quality of life on the island for residents or for visitors. Isle of Palms residents have long borne the costs associated with they visitors as well as rental guests. The costs of cleaning the beach, cleaning the beach access pass, handling the increased tonnage of waste disposal, and the increased number of police and fire personnel to handle the influx are substantial costs. Residents have also borne costs associated with the acquisition and operation of the city parking lots, marina, and public restrooms. The term "beach season" is rapidly becoming a misnomer. Demand for the beach on a year-round basis is becoming the norm. The adoption of a year-round IOP parking plan is but one small step in the right direction. Many more steps will be needed as we move forward to ensure that the beach is a pleasant place for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir, come up, please.
Hello, my name is Stan Harris. I reside at the corner of 8th Avenue and Ocean, therefore I have public parking along 180 feet of my property. But I would first like to thank you for the recent decisions in expanding the residential parking plan year-round and the parallel parking for Palm. I think with those two decisions, it goes a long way to improve the quality of life of the residents in that area, as well as the safety for everyone, the vacationers and the residents. But I urge you to go further, make it island-wide. As Scott indicated, there are short streets from 3rd Avenue to 9th Avenue that is designated as public parking today, and in the summer, you try to cram in where you might have 12 cars. In the off-season, you get double that, parked in all kinds of directions, creating an unsafe environment. So, thank you again for those decisions, but again, I urge you to go further with it and have the political will to see it through. Thanks.
Thanks, Stan. Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Please, come up first.
My name is Greg Wood, and I live at 1942nd Avenue, but one of my neighbors has written up his opinions, and he isn't able to be here, so he asked me if I would read his opinion. So if that's allowed, that's what I want to do.
Yes, sir, it is.
Thank you. As a resident for 32 years, I support and-
Greg, state who you're reading for.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I was going to sign it at the end. The resident that I'm reading for is William Campbell, and he lives at 3242nd Avenue. As a resident of, for 32 years, I support enforcement of the Managed Beach Parking Plan year-round, parallel parking on both sides of Palm Boulevard from 21st to 41st, and prohibition of trailer parking on Waterway. I have always been an active supporter of the Managed Beach Parking Program, and when I talk to violators, they often say that there are no parking signs. I understand that there are over 400 signs. When they were put up, and I've parked here all my life and will continue to park here, I understand the idea of one simple, clear parking rule that requires zero brain power to understand. We have had the IOP parking permit in operation for several years, and from my vantage point, it seems to work very well. Let's just make it a year-round issue. I also understand that the IOP provides much more parking than required by law. Parallel parking on both sides of Palm Boulevard will reduce the parking density, and that, in my opinion, is good for the island. Frankly, I would like to see parking only on the beach side to reduce pedestrian traffic. Trailer parking outside the marina on city streets is tacky and dangerous. Trailer parking should be confined to the marina, private property, or a specific storage facility. We need to take back control of parking on the IOP. At one time, only the summer months experienced maximum parking. With the growth of Mount Pleasant, every weekend is seen as an opportunity to go to the IOP and get away from the congestion in Mount Pleasant and Highway 17. Visitors have brought the congestion to the island, and we are maxing out all the time. We need to contain and control the sprawl. We need to enforce respect for residents and property, or we will continue to be overrun. I support the proposal. Signed, Bill Campbell.
Thank you. Greg, you did a good job. Anyone, yes, sir, please.
Vince DeGangi at 442nd Avenue, and I wanted to thank you all for your work that you all do. And I, too, support the resident parking plan, year-round plan, and parallel parking on Palm Boulevard. For all of the reasons that all the other residents have said, I also echo their comments. But you can see it when you leave the island, all the growth that we're seeing in Mount Pleasant and other surrounding areas, and again, all those people are going to be looking for places to go to enjoy our island, and they certainly are more than welcome to do that. But it does cause a safety issues, it does cause concern for security in those residential neighborhoods where people tend to gravitate to park. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks. Anyone else? Going once, twice?
I don't know that I have that much else to add, but I typed it all up on one page, so I might as well read it. Elizabeth Campson, 32 Intercoastal Court, and I'm also here to comment on parking. You know, from the very first year the parking plan was implemented, I'd always thought that year-round enforcement made the most sense. It offers visitors and residents alike, you know, a consistent policy. The stated purpose of the ordinance itself, if you read it, begins with the recognized need to reduce hazardous traffic conditions resulting from the use of streets within area zone for residential uses for the parking of vehicles by persons visiting the adjacent beach or commercial uses, and ends with the duty to preserve the safety of children, other pedestrians, and traffic, as well as the peace, good order, comfort, convenience, and welfare of the inhabitants of the city. And I don't think that's a seasonal, it's not seasonal in nature. Any restricted neighborhood, you know, they have restrictions in place year-round. It's not, you know, just during the summer or during a school year. You know, they offer year-round protections adopted to preserve the residential nature of their area and to provide for the safety and peace and convenience of their residents, which also happens to be the reason our parking ordinance was enacted. There are ways, multiple ways, I'm sure, to accommodate residential concerns within a year-round plan. Personally, I would like to seek to add maybe a residential function to the list of special permits that we already are able to obtain, which would allow residents free date-specific placards for parties or gatherings. Parallel parking on both sides of Palm, and now, as I understand it, probably island-wide, is not only a recommendation that the head of our public safety departments have made, but it's also a DOT preferred practice. Implementing this will provide needed relief to Palm and will most probably result in our only offering either quadruple or maybe quintuple the amount of parking necessary. We go way above, seven and a half times, eight times the number of access, and, you know, that's great, but when it starts to become a public safety issue, you know, we need to look at how to manage that appropriately. Finally- Finally, the prohibition of trailer parking on Waterway. The trailers parking on Waterway routinely encroach upon the multipurpose path, pushing those attempting to use it into the roadway. The distance between the edge of the road and the edge of the path down there is seven feet in some places, 10 in others, it's eight, it's, you know, it's just a variable distance, and I measured it last night. The trailer that we own holds a 21-foot boat, and it's over nine feet wide. So, we can't park along large chunks of that stretch without being either in the road or on the path. The practice is an ongoing public safety issue, you know, regardless of whether it's a resident or a non-resident, and it needs to be resolved by eliminating the Waterway option. Historically, the only overflow parking from the marina site that was allowed, whether by resident or non-resident, or a car, or a truck, or a trailer, or whatever, was limited to 41st. Personally, you know, I feel that all of the business of the marina should be combined to the lease premises as defined under the various leases. However, you know, I'll agree that returning to the long-held allowance by eliminating Waterway from the off-site practice and keeping 41st is reasonable and fair. It would allow a very limited encroachment of commercial marine activity outside the footprint of the lease premises and into the SR1 residential districts while serving to improve public safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else? Going once, twice, on to regular business. Thank y'all all, and again, I apologize for our running late. Reports from standing committees, Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Ways and Means Committee met 5:00 PM Tuesday, March 20th. Called meeting into order, approved the previous meeting minutes, and had citizens' comments. Joe Petro says here, owner of Banana Cabana, but that's actually Coconut Joe's. So, was pleased to see the committee would discuss going to an hourly rate in municipal parking lots, and he voted his full support for this action. Also, Jay Clark, Tennessee Horse Court, owner of Morgan Creek Grill, expressed his support for hourly parking in municipal parking lots for front beach businesses. Financial statements, monthly financial statements was given by presentation treasurer Suggs. Said that general fund revenue was at 65% in fiscal year 18 budget, while expenditures were 59% in their general fund budget. Talked for eight months, fiscal year was 67%. Doing well there. Under expenditures, reported all other at 248% of the budget. This category is where the city charged the disaster recovery expenses of $350,000 related to Hurricane Irma. They'll be, these expenditures will be offset by FEMA reimbursements once the city receives. Total cash on hand is approximately $21,800,000, and that includes the dollar significant amount associated with current beach restoration project. At this, at that time, March 20th, about $3 million has been spent on that project. Tourism schedules, the city has received 3% more municipal accommodations fees and beach preservation fees than in fiscal year 17. Had no collection of State A tax funds, or Charleston County Accommodations Tax passed through in February. Hospitality taxes are running at about 5% ahead of last year. Went through the project worksheets. Old business, who hadn't updated on a beach restoration, and got a report from Administrator Tucker on change order. New business, we had a recommendation from the Public Safety Committee to make a managed beach parking plan year-round and require parallel parking on Palm Boulevard from 41st, oh, 21st to 41st, and to prohibit any trailer parking on the Waterway. The proposed, suppose, proposal, excuse me, submitted by Stand-Tech to get this done was an amount of $13,640 to revise the beach, managed beach parking plan and apply for encroachment permit from SCDOT. That comes up under, under new business later on, doesn't it?
I think this is the, the only part that comes up, the Stand-Tech.
Yeah. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve this expenditure.
And this would be a sole source contract, and I have the sole source justification to be read into the minutes or-
Thank you. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. We have a motion and a second discussion. Anybody?
Are we thereby approving all of these other-
We are, just a proposal submitted by Stand-Tech to get this done in the amount of $13,640 to revise the managed beach parking plan and to apply for an encroachment permit from SCODOT.
That's all.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
May we ask Administrator Tucker to give us a reason why it's a sole source with Stand-Tech and their history?
Sure. So, for, for purposes of the audience and the new members of council, Stand-Tech is who the city engaged when we first started working on the managed beach parking, and there was the desire on the part of the city to, you know, to regulate and put up signage and enforce. So, there is a huge body of data that they put together for the city that supports the, the enforcement, supports the safety practices, and all of that information. So, Stand-Tech would be able to work the most quickly. There are certainly other firms that do this type of work, that are transportation engineers and do this type of work, but they would not have available to them all of the information that Stand-Tech has already garnered, as they've helped us through this process over the last two years.
Okay. Great, thank you very much. There was a lot of discussion about this, and that's about all my comments on this subject. Yes, ma'am.
Is there any redundancy in what they've already done for the city versus what we're asking them to do now? In other words, have they already done any portion of what we're asking?
No, ma'am, I don't believe so. I certainly think that they will use all of their source documents that they, that they did before, you know, to, to be able to develop this.
Okay.
And they will be doing-
Let me get on that now.
And, well, I will supply this to the clerk to read into the, to have with the minutes, the one qualified source.
Is there any further discussions? There be, yes, ma'am.
I just want, so this is, we're voting on, on hiring Stand-Tech to get the permits, basically.
Right. But in a few minutes, we're going to vote on year, the plan, the plan, right now, in a few minutes.
Okay.
Since this is the majority of what people are here for. I'm sure they want to go home and eat dinner, because they're entertained by us. Any other comments? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? Motion passes. Then, we had extensive conversation. Councilmember Bell moved to make the city, for the city to make the Managed Beach Parking Plan effective year-round, and it was seconded by Councilmember Ferrans. We had discussion about it. The motion passed on a vote of six to three. At this time, I entertain a motion to make the Managed Beach Parking Plan effective year-round. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion? Yes, ma'am.
So, public safety and council will be discussing many traffic and safety solutions this year, and unless there's a pressing need or advantage to moving forward quickly, I think we should be fully considering them and in relation to one another. In this particular instance, I think we might be, we might also want to consider making this a 24/7 managed, not just extending the whole year, but also considering 24/7. And so, I'm wondering if there's an openness to kicking this back to public safety to discuss the consequences of making that, taking, and doing it all at once.
The motion simply states it's for the city to make the Managed Beach Parking Plan effective year-round.
Right.
It doesn't state anything else.
I guess what I'm saying is, could we postpone, send it to public safety, and do it, and then do it all at once?
That's totally up to council, but I'm not in favor of that. I'd like to get the issue settled tonight. Yes, sir.
Well, I'll go ahead and copy or comment on it, since it was my motion. The intention here was to do things incrementally that we can accomplish within reasonable timeframes, not to continue to punt these issues into the next season. So, you know, you can argue, and I've heard the argument in the last meeting, that we don't need to do it right now. We have to move through committee. We have to go to first reading. No amendments can be made until second reading, right? So, amendments can be made if we move this through council now into a second reading. Then it has to pass. So, you start adding those timeframes together, and we're midway through this season at best, if we can move it through. So, we can wait till the end of this season, have another debate, which I think would constitute about the fourth year of discussing what we're going to do about parking on the island, because they used to sit out there and have these same debates. My intention was to do things reasonably that could get done, that would not negate making changes later, right? I don't, and with all due respect to Councilperson Smith, these are things that, and I do agree with her, that we will consider other things over time, but waiting to bundle everything together and get nothing done seems to me to be the worst option, particularly given the comments that we've heard. I didn't hear anybody out there saying this was a bad idea. The only thing I've heard is, you know, and I think we need to do this as a council, is address the fact that most of us don't like having to buy booklets to have our guests attend. If that's the only issue we're dealing with, this, this to me is, is kind of a no-brainer. We need to move on with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I ran on this platform. I think it's time. We've heard this election told us they wanted us to change. They wanted us to protect the residents of Isle of Palms. I do think we can fine-tune it with the placards and things like that, but I think we need to move forward on this.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
I think one of the biggest things that the city's been ostracized about is the fact that we've been retroactive. I mean, we, we respond to problems, and I think the fact that the growth that we're having in Mount, in the tri-county area is that, you know, we're, we're taking a step forward now to try to mitigate problems that we foresee in the future. And I think, I think that, I think that's a good move, and I think we need to continue to move forward with it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
I just feel like it's a little heavy-handed. I don't think we need this in some of the off months, November, December, January, February. So, I worry about the enforcement, people having their guests get a lot of tickets, things like that. Somehow, I, I want to feel like we can manage that, holiday parties, oyster rose thing. That's what worries me, is that I don't want it to punish the residents, is my fear. And, and, you know, we can kind of relax in the winter, and I don't want us to feel like we're in a police-heavy enforcement state and worried about our company parking in front of our house on Hartnett or Forest Trail or Sparrow or wherever when it's really downtime. So, that's my issue. That's just where I worry about it actually having a reverse effect on residents with tickets.
Thank you.
Yes, John. I completely appreciate Councilmember Rice's position, and I think in terms of hearing from the community, that's, that's the argument that I've heard, that there's a concern that guests who are visiting, their friends on the island are going to have a harder time. The, the challenge I have with that, though, is that's the case during season, and we've already said this is what we want. And I think what we're doing here to echo Councilmember Buchanan is we're, we're being very proactive with this, with this motion. We're also really kind of doubling down on our brand as an island and what we care about, which is we want quality of life for residents, and I think that that translates into quality of life for visitors and day-trippers as well, which is why I support it. I do agree that we, we need to find a better protocol and process for managing guests. I think the placards is a great idea. Thanks to, to Scott and Elizabeth for, for that suggestion. I also know there's been discussion of mobile parking, applications for paid parking. I know that there's some mobile applications that actually manage guest parking as well. So, there could be a comprehensive solution in that regard. I'm not making suggestions on that now, just food for thought for the Public Safety Committee. But I think moving forward, as, as a council, we need to commit to solving the guest parking.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else?
I'd just like to respond to something Councilmember Bell said. This was not, my suggestion was not intended to postpone this indefinitely. I feel like there is some room there because we, this doesn't take effect until, I mean, really doesn't have an impact until September. And so, that was my feeling, that we have that amount of time to maybe consider some other possibilities within this. But we, at Public Safety, will definitely look at the implementation and see how, if we can maybe respond to some of those issues.
Okay. I got, received a letter from resident, can't remember who it was, that made a significant point to me and that I never thought about before. They're saying, if you have a managed beach parking year-round, and you have the placard in the windshield of the car, and your neighbors have them too, you don't have any suspicious vehicles in the neighborhood anymore, because everybody's going to have a placard, that means they're supposed to be there. And, you know, we have a problem, I'm sure the police department can testify to this, every once in a while, a rash of burglaries in the rental homes. And so, now, they can identify that everybody, they're, they're supposed to be in this neighborhood with those placards. So, I thought that was an interesting point. Is there any further discussion on this? There being none? All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against?
No.
Okay, vote passes eight to one. Also, to wrap this up, we had a motion from Councilmember Bell, move to prohibit trailer parking resident and non-resident on Waterway Boulevard, and there was a lot of discussion about this in the vote. The motion passed. Is there a motion at this time?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yep.
Yep, yes, sir.
Once again, I'll, I'll put context behind this. There's multiple issues here, and I thank Elizabeth Campson for measuring. I was actually going to go do that today and didn't. But that's a very narrow strip of property, right? We've listened before, our current tenure on council, last year as well, people complaining about the, the paths being blocked, the incursion into the road. I, I did call friends with smaller boats today, just out of curiosity. A 17-foot Boston Whaler trailer is nine feet wide. Elizabeth has measured theirs. We have areas here where we're parking boat trailers now that are six feet to eight feet, maybe 10 feet. So, you have two options. So, as we talk about things in the Public Safety Committee, consistent theme is residential pedestrian traffic, bicycle traffic on Waterway. You have two choices. You're in the road or you're on the sidewalk. I play more golf than I probably should. 200 mile an hour golf balls coming off a golf club doesn't leave a great option for people on the golf course side, and walking in the road with the cars is not a very good option on the other side of the road. So, it is a public safety concern. It's not just an issue of containing the marina to the marina. I too believe the marina should be contained to the 5.123 acres that it is, but not passing this and getting these boat trailers out of the way of pedestrian traffic is just a public safety concern waiting to happen, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Yes, Ryan?
And so, is this, is this going to go through, because we already have ordinance on the books that has addresses those areas, so does this create a new ordinance or a layer on top of it, or how is this going to be worded, or how is it, I mean, managed?
So, I believe, I believe you already have the draft-
It's in the back.
Of the, the first draft of the ordinance. And I think the other one that, that you're, the other ordinance that you're talking about was the one about trailers.
Correct, yes, ma'am.
It just deletes Waterway from the existing, that talks about the trailers, the red line.
Okay. The question, the thing is, I have, I meant, and I can see where the problems are, but we're still going to go ahead and allow parking along 41st Avenue, is my understanding correct?
To Frank Satilli, as it currently is.
Up to both resident and non-resident.
Right. Yeah, there was no change proposed for, for that part.
And as long as, I don't understand why we can't have where all vehicles are off, I mean, you have it at 41st Avenue, vehicles have to be off the road, have to be off the sidewalk. Why can't we address that same situation along Waterway, where cars have to be off the road, off the sidewalk?
And trailers.
You know, cars and trailers, all road, I mean, have to be off the road, off the sidewalk, the same way it would- the same way it would mimic 41st Avenue, and make them both residential areas. And that's why I would address that way. I have a feeling that the marina's going to fill up, and then our residents who want to go down there and use it, or limit the size of their boats, but limit, they're not going to have a place to park. And I think it's going to create even another stir. And I'm just looking at the, it may be a problem for residents down the road when they go to utilize the marina and still have no place to park. And I'm not sure what the other, you know, situation, what we would have to tell them at that point.
I mean, I'm happy to comment on that. I mean, the, I don't think you're wrong. I think we have a problem with trying to put too much into the marina, right? So to me, they're separate issues. The question is, do we want the marina overflow into the residential areas? And as Mr. Crowe, or Garrett has said, you know, he's going to build a house there, right? So I look at it, and the real estate doesn't exist on Waterway to park trailers, right? So people do park them there, right? And Ryan, I totally understand what you're saying, but there's not room hardly to park a car there. You come further up 41st, where I've sat out there and fought this issue for a couple of years, you have the drainage ditches on the sides that don't permit trailer parking beyond Frank's Attili, right? So there is room on both sides of 41st up to Frank's Attili to park trailers, and those have continued to be parked, resident and non-resident. The issue the marina manager is going to have is, how do I start to contain the marina to the marina? And, you know, it's unfortunate if they want to grow beyond those boundaries, but it needs to be addressed, and that will be addressed through the Real Property Committee.
But my second thought, if it's really to control the amount of overflow into the residential areas, then why even allow parking on 41st Avenue? Why not eliminate that as well? Is my concern, I mean...
Happily entertain a motion to change that.
So that's the only thing, is, I mean, you justify it in one area and make it not appropriate in another. Because I'm just...
No, to be clear, it's not in the residential areas on 41st today.
Okay.
Right? It's in front of the parking lot where Dweez Island resides.
Yes, sir. I've been here 25 years.
Right. No, no, but you go beyond Frank's Attili, there is no trailer parking beyond Frank's Attili.
Correct. Okay.
Or cars, by the way.
I'm just, I have a feeling that we are going to run into a problem where the residents, as I said, I would like to see where it's just both areas are resident-only parking.
Well, you're welcome to make an amendment if you care to.
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we amend it and allow resident parking only.
Would you want the first reading?
It doesn't matter.
The reading is later. This is, this is motion two.
Second.
Any discussion on that? What was the amendment?
I want to...
To allow resident-only parking along 41st Avenue and Waterway up to Duck Lane, where all tires are off the road.
For trailers?
For trailers. Yes.
So the only difference would be that you would be taking something, I'm just trying to make sure I understand if that's okay. So you would be taking something that is currently resident or non-resident on 41st, making that resident only.
Yes, ma'am.
And then over on Waterway, the section between 41st and Duck Lane, you would leave it resident-only parking, whether it's trailers or vehicles. Is that, am I understanding that that was your intent?
Yes, ma'am. Where, where you can legally park.
Right, right. I think we're enforcing now, when people park over on the sidewalk, they're ticketed if they're seen, so we're doing that amendment.
So the amendment, I'll make sure I'm clear on this. The amendment is a lot different than the original, original motion.
Correct.
Right? It's going to, it's allowing resident parking. The motion is prohibit all trailer parking, resident and non-resident.
Okay. Point of clarity over here, if I may. The motion did not eliminate resident car parking on Waterway. It was addressing the problem of public safety with trailers on Waterway, nothing more. So what you're suggesting is we don't have a safety issue if it's a resident trailer, but we may have a safety issue if it's a non-resident trailer, right? So I'm a little...
Let me try to clarify.
It doesn't, it doesn't address, let me finish, please. It doesn't address what the motion was. The motion was to eliminate trailer parking on Waterway, period, right? So an amendment that takes that out is, in my mind, conflicting with the motion as it was made.
Yes, sir.
So most of the boat owners on the island do not live on the water, so they have to trailer their boats. To be friendly to the residents, I second the amendment that we allow, I would change it and allow for there just to be residents on Waterway. Leave 41 the way it is, but give the residents a break, they're boat owners that aren't on the water.
Any further discussion? Yes, ma'am?
I also believe that this, there are a lot of residents who do like to park their trailer legally and safely on Waterway, who've been doing it for a long time. It's not, you know, when you, when you do reduce the criteria to just residents, it's not nearly as burdensome, and they don't have to pay to park if they park on Waterway. So that's a bonus. And I just don't feel like we should take that away from the residents. I mean, there are residents who really like to park their trailers there. So I feel like that...
I'll make one final closing comment. There are residents who would like to be able to park in the marina, right? So, you know, there are ways to address this. You know, to try to separate resident and non-resident from what I intend it as a public safety concern, which I believe it is, is the parking of trailers on Waterway. So, you know, I, to me, the spirit and the intent of the motion was to eliminate trailer parking. And it's either one or the other. It's not, well, it's okay if it's a resident, right? Because we won't have a public safety issue. So the first time a child is hurt, or has to go over to the golf course to walk, or has to go out in the street, because we do not have a consistent perm on that road at all, right? And you're just saying that the problem that the residents that have spoken on this have encountered over the last year doesn't exist. It's not a public safety concern. So if we're voting on a public safety concern, we will move forward and restrict trailer parking. If we're not voting on a public safety concern, and we're more concerned with accommodating residents parking trailers, I understand that, but I don't believe that was the intent.
Yes, sir.
I agree. Waterway, to me, is a safety issue, and it doesn't matter whether it's resident or non-resident, if they're blocking the multi-use path or veering out onto the, parked on the road, unless we can catch them before they take off on their boat, we're stuck with them being in an unsafe situation that we can't resolve until we get back. I, I'm wondering whether there's room to, an alternative would be to make 41st residential trailer parking only, while not allowing any trailer parking on Waterway, to give residents that, you know, possibility exclusively. But I think we're talking about Ryan's motion right now.
I will withdraw my second. I mean, I will draw my motion.
Okay. Well, I'd like...
All right, go ahead.
I'd like to make the motion that we also make 41st strictly resident-only trailer.
To Frank's Attili.
To Frank's Attili, where trailer parking is already allowed, make that resident only.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on this amendment?
I'm curious what, because we've got the managed parking plan that designates what's residential and what's not, what, what we would need to do to make that happen.
Is that a question for me?
Yes, for you. Sorry.
Okay. So I guess in an ideal scenario, in terms of just keeping this clean, I would have liked to have seen a vote regarding the parallel parking on Waterway, and then a separate motion regarding 41st Avenue. And in terms of what it does to the assignment, it simply means that we give, we would give Sand Tech a different assignment from what they've got, which I don't think we're talking about enough of additional tasks to really affect the numerics. So they would, you know, receive the different assignment to designate that section of 41st Avenue as resident only, the section where parking is allowed now. So that would just be the difference.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am?
Clarification. Is that considered a residential area? You know, it's more of a commercial area in terms of parking lots. Now, I guess on the other side of the ditch, there are homes. But is that considered from...
It's zone residential, yeah.
It's still residential? Okay.
It's zone residential, but I think that what council contemplated before by allowing the parking there was because it wasn't immediately adjacent to any residences.
Okay. One last question.
Yes, sir.
Don't we have something on the books already about the length of cars and trailers not to exceed 21 feet?
20 feet.
20 feet.
20 feet. So a car and a trailer is, together is going to exceed 20 feet, no matter what.
That obstructs any public right of way.
Right. All right. Okay. So we got an amendment.
Right.
Do we need to vote on first? And...
Susan, go on.
Yep.
This is the 41st...
Marie, would you...
I'm just trying to figure out who the problem is. Who's the, who's supposed to be calling for the vote?
The mayor's.
That's my thought.
No.
The chairman.
The chairman.
Chairman.
Chairman of Ways and Means.
That's you, Jim?
No.
I think, I think the mayor is chairing the meeting.
Mayor's the chair of the city council.
The chair of Ways and Means is giving a committee report, which can include them making motions and things, but it's, the mayor is chairing the meeting.
So we'll call for the vote on the amendment, which is on 41st Avenue, instead of having it both residential and non-residential cars and trailers, to make it strictly residential cars and trailers. Is that correct, the way I read that?
Residential trailer, cars with trailers?
Cars and trailers. It can be either one.
It could be either one.
Okay.
That is the motion. All in favor of that, please signify by saying aye.
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 Nays?
Nay.
Nay.
Now you got the motion.
The main motion.
Okay, now back to the main motion of parking on Waterway Boulevard, to keep it, no trailers on Waterway Boulevard.
Resident or non-resident.
Resident or non-resident.
Resident or non-resident. That is the motion. Do I have a second?
There was a second.
Yeah, it's already on the table.
It's already on the table. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nays?
Nay.
No. Did you get that, Marie?
She had to be quick if she got it.
Did you get it, Marie?
I did.
Yeah.
There's a discussion of whether I should be presenting the rest of this?
Yeah, that's...
But you present the report, and then he, then you can make motions, and the mayor...
We just got confirmation on that one.
Well, it's on both ways, so I've seen it. Okay, if I'm allowed to continue, then Councilmember Rice moved to charge $1 per hour to parking in municipal lots.
Did we skip?
What about parallel parking?
Yeah, there's, there's still parallel, you might want to see if there's a motion for parallel parking on...
I thought Mary did that. Did not?
No. I'm home.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Well, you better lead it. I don't think... Okay. So we have a motion and a second for parallel parking only on Palm Boulevard from 21st to 41st Avenue.
On the non-ocean side.
On both sides of Palm Boulevard.
Right, but the amendment...
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify?
Well, we have had, heard several people ask that it be island-wide.
Correct.
And that's not...
I'm sorry.
Okay. All right, back to where we are. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes have it. Back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I guess, I'm really not sure about the format here, but do we need to talk about the change to $1 per hour, or is that in first reading?
So, no, sir, that's not in first reading. If you're talking about the change to the kiosk at the municipal lots...
Can I still, now, talk about that?
Yeah, you certainly can report that you all talked about it, and then the mayor...
I'll make a motion.
The mayor should...
Okay. All right. There was discussion about the parking lots and how much we're charging in the kiosk there, and how much it would cost to change them to a set amount per hour, to reprogram the kiosk, would be $385. Cost of signage for the kiosk would be $2,000. This would be helpful for front beach merchants, where people just want to come down and get something to eat, rather than having to pay $8 during the week and $10 on the weekend, just flat rate. To Councilmember Rice, move the change to, to charge to $1 per hour in municipal lots. And I'll let you take the...
Okay. Having heard that, I'm going to make a motion that we change the parking rate to $1 per hour to help our local businesses. That is the form of my motion, and also the kiosk reprogramming and $385 in the new signage.
Second.
Second. Okay. This is also going to affect our hotel. And if we change this, our hotel, we had a contract, and it's $10 a day. If we go this route, it would be going up to $12 a day. So I would like to make a motion to amend the hotel's agreement not to go up any further than in the contract we've given it. It'd be $10 a day.
Don't you dare, it's a separate motion.
And that's what I would recommend. I'd recommend that you go ahead and vote concerning whether or not it being a dollar per hour, and then perhaps make an alternate motion that we amend the, if it's the will of council to amend the hotel's agreement, the section 6C says basically if the, if the rates change, the hotel's rates change accordingly, which would mean that they would get an increase from eight or 10 per day to $12 per day.
I was just trying to protect our hotel in advance.
Right. I understand. That's the right thing.
Okay. Back to $1 an hour.
Mr. Mayor?
Any more discussion?
Yes. So we are at $1.50 an hour in the parking lot. No, we're at a...
The street.
We're $1.50 on the street per hour. And then in the parking lot, we didn't have a per hour.
It's per day.
Per day.
Correct.
So now we're changing that to a per hour, and we're changing the per hour in the lot and on the street to $1.
No, no, just in the lots.
Just in the lot.
Just in the lot?
Yes.
Okay, then I misunderstood, because then how, okay, so how are you having on-street at one charge in the lot at a separate charge?
More turnover.
Yeah, trying to encourage turnover on the street for the businesses, that people would go to the lots.
So an eight-hour day that normally costs $10 is now going to cost...
$8 in the lot, $12 on the street.
Okay. Okay. Got it.
Okay. Any other discussion? Yes, sir?
Are we capping the hourly amount?
Are we capping the hourly amount? I think as long as somebody wants to continue paying the one-hour amount, no, we're not capping it.
I think the enforcement's eight to eight, so...
$12 is capped.
So $12, you're essentially capping.
We're reducing the amount in the lot. The lot's been a great success in terms of the kiosk and the revenue we draw. I think most would agree that it's guests coming from off-island, right, which indirectly subsidizes a lot of costs, and our city costs are only going up. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Well, just...
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, I think we do need to note that lots bring in last, in fiscal year '17, brought in $318,000, so I'm not sure which way this might go, but we may see a dip in how much we bring in overall.
And it may increase hospitality.
But it may, yeah, there may be, yeah.
Corresponding.
We could have an increase, too.
Yeah, I just think it's worth taking into consideration as we go down.
Councilman, begin.
And I think one of the things we really want to do is try to drive more guests to the front beach area, the front beach lots, especially if we start to utilize a paid parking plan within the residential area to make it more, you know, effective, to have people up front there instead of back in the main room.
Absolutely.
I do agree. I think the flexibility is a good thing, and it will help, it may help drive more people to the lots, for sure.
Okay. Any other discussion? Here or none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Here or none? All right, now, a motion to amend the hotel's agreement to not, you know, right now, the way they are, they're at $10 an hour. If we go to this, it would increase to $12 per day. I think we need to make sure we not increase the hotel's contract we've made. So, a motion to amend the hotel's agreement up to its current amount, approved daily rate, not to exceed $10.
Make that a motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nays? Okay.
So, do I continue my report?
Yes, sir.
That's okay?
Yes, I want you.
All right, then we had, we have no miscellaneous business meetings coming up, was budget workshop tomorrow afternoon at 5:15 here in City Hall, I believe.
That's correct.
Next meeting day will be 5:00 PM Tuesday, April 18th, 2018. There was no need for executive session, and we adjourned at 6:40. And that ends my report.
Thank you.
It was a long one, sorry, it's so long, we had a lot to do, though.
There was a lot to do, we had a long night. Public Safety Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. The Public Safety Committee met 4:00 PM Monday, March 5th, 2018, with councilmembers Bell, Ward, and myself, city staff, and members of the public. We started out by correcting a discrepancy in the minutes on the suggested construction noise ordinance change, so the Saturday hours matched up with the ordinance we are considering, which is to limit construction from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM on Saturdays, as well as a few other things. We voted to recommend the request for the Seal Kids Swim Event and the Turtle Truck Event that we've already considered today. We heard citizens' comments from Rusty Streepman at 4004 Palm about issues with construction delivery trucks parking in the street, and his request for more enforcement. We heard from Elizabeth Campson, 32 Intracoastal Court, making, about making tweaks to the Managed Beach Parking Plan, as she reiterated here. Levon Setimo, she's a neighbor, talked about the poor condition of many of the beach access paths, and asked the city to require that all dogs have an IOP dog license on the beach and in the dog park. Gail Jordan from 3704 Palm Boulevard asked the city to eliminate parking in front of the residences of full-time residents. Members of the IOP Coyote Coalition, Bob Miller, Sally Wiseman, asked for signs, flyers, and renters' welcome packets, adoption of an island-wide coyote management plan, and island-wide implementation of coyote-related actions. And Gary Hart from the Banana Commandant expressed concerns about parking for him and his employees in the city lots due to the reopening of the Palms Hotel. Let's see, I'll come back to coyotes. And we also, Administrator Tucker updated us on positive changes regarding obstructions on Palm Boulevard sidewalks, which is a South Carolina Department of Transportation road, which means they are responsible for fixing problems. They have recently been working to resolve overhang issues on Palm and Waterway Boulevards from 21st to 41st, so we're excited about that. And meanwhile, the city is working to alert property owners along Palm and related rental agencies, so they know if their landscaping is encroaching on the sidewalks, and hopefully they will respond and be more careful about that. As far as parking, we obviously talked at length about all of the parking issues that have already come before us. And for the short term, let's see, we also touched on the issue, issues related to Palm Boulevard north of 41st Avenue, and will continue to look at that, as well as other parking and traffic issues, including the possibility of paid parking on Palm as we come up with a more comprehensive plan this year. Crosswalks, we started a conversation on how to bring more attention to the crosswalk at 20th and Palm Boulevard, where it can be difficult to cross safely. That is a, because it is a South Carolina Department of Transportation road, we are reaching out to them, but the city might be able to make it a stamped crosswalk to draw more attention to it. The cost of stamping across four lanes of traffic, we heard from our city administrator, would be approximately $10,000, so we might want to take that into consideration with budget stuff. And, let's see, we approved the law enforcement mutual aid agreement between the Isle of Palms Police Department and the Town of Mount Pleasant Police Department. I actually had a question, is that something that we need to address here?
So, there are going to be several of these law enforcement agreements that come through public safety and also, you know, through council. And the city attorney is working on all of those, making sure that they're all consistent. So, the, my recommendation would be that city council approve those all at once, rather than doing them piece-meals.
All right. We heard from Chief Graham at the fire department. In the month of February, fire personnel responded to 43 calls, of which 26 were EMS calls, and they did 19 fire inspections. A leak has been found in the radiator of the generator at the public safety building. The city is waiting on a quote for the replacement of the radiator. I'm not sure exactly where that is, but in the meantime, inquiries are being made, were being made to rent one, and it looks like it was going to cost us about $10,000 of expenses related to that. And the fire department has had 86 kindergarteners from Jenny Moore Elementary School visit. The police department, Captain Nasri gave us a report. The police department has hosted Coffee with a Cop, hosted a Coffee with a Cop event at Cafe Panama. I'm not sure if I'm saying that right, but I think it's actually different. Sorry. It's a great place, and they have great croissants. Within 12 residents attended that, and Charleston County Consolidated 911 Dispatch also attended. The police department took 3,559 calls in February, made 360 traffic stops, wrote 77 tickets. We discussed the percentage of traffic stops that lead to tickets and related enforcement issues, and possibly changing how stats are compiled and presented to city council to make the information more meaningful and potentially save staff time. Now, for coyotes, I know that's why a lot of you are here. Let's see, at the time of the report, the city had been deploying five traps around 2,300 Boulevard at the owner's request, because coyotes are active in that area, which is something that hopefully people who use that beach access pass, I think, should know to be careful about. The city has ordered new beach access signage, which will include a message about wildlife. We discussed a makeover to the city's webpage, which has been put in place, to reflect a Be Coyote Smart message, which has three main sections about the role residents and visitors can play in the coyote management plan. One is, one of the main messages is don't attract coyotes to human spaces with food. Another is protect pets, and the other is don't ignore coyotes. There are more complete recommendations under each of those sections. Please visit iop.net to look at the coyote management page and look at these more closely. And Councilmember Bell introduced a multi-pronged motion, which was discussed with input from the Coyote Coalition, and ultimately passed as a recommendation to city council. The recommendation has three parts. One is for the, was for the city to move from the current monthly fee structure for trapping to a pay-per-coyote basis. The second was the city staff provide the committee a step-by-step plan to implement hunting as illegal and lethal means immediately to reduce the coyote population. And the third was review and recommendation for a comprehensive coyote management plan to be adopted by the city.
Okay, hearing that, and thank you very much, and I thank your Coyote Coalition for everything they've done. We're going to break this up in three parts. The first motion would be the city to move from the current monthly fee structure to a pay-per-coyote basis. I make that as a motion.
Second.
Discussion. Yes, sir.
Yeah, the motion and the intent was, we've proven, pretty much with Wild Dunes, that a separate trapping effort, and with the city's trapping effort, that we can't trap our way out of the problem. So, you know, continuing to pay monthly fees for little to no results, and trapping innocent animals in the process is probably not the best plan. So, there were, at the Coyote Expo, a variety of trappers who said, we'll do this, you only pay us if we catch coyotes. Fiscally, sounds like a better plan. I think in the interim, Mayor Carroll has posted some things on Facebook and spoken with some folks. Naggs Head, North Carolina, has had some results, right? So, he's been in contact with a trapper who claims to have caught 17, right? So, we want to know how the miracle trappers are working, and be happy to pay them for eliminating coyotes. And this would at least get us off this paid-for-no results plan, and looking towards a paid-for-results plan.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this?
I don't know.
Yes, sir.
You will not be getting an honorary membership to PETA.
I think I blew that a long time ago.
Thanks for mentioning. Okay, any other discussion?
I'd like to hear from our city administrator, if you've heard, gotten a read, whether there are trappers who are open to that kind of arrangement.
So, the police department has been working on this assignment with the intent to come back and report to city council what they, I mean, to the Public Safety Committee, what they have learned, really about all three of these elements of this. And I do believe that they have found a trapper that has indicated that, I'm looking out here for concurrent, one trapper that has indicated that they would do it on a per-coyote basis.
Okay.
Okay. Hearing anything else? Barring none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Okay, number two. The city staff provide the committee with a step-by-step plan to implement hunting as illegal and lethal means immediately, to immediately reduce the coyote population. I'll make that as a motion.
I will second it.
Discussion.
Jimmy, if I may offer a comment. The way that reads is this crazy guy sitting up here is, wants to go arm folks and go kill coyotes immediately. The intention of the motion, and the way that I had worded it, was, let's understand what it would take to do it. It was not an intention for this council right now, sorry, I'm trying to throw water on it. It was not an intention to say, let's go hunt coyotes right now. I think it's prudent on us to understand what that would take, you know, what agencies, what laws, what ordinances would have to be put in place, should we decide at a later date that that is the option we want to deploy. But it was not in any way intended to say, let's immediately go with lethal means to hunt coyotes, just for point of clarity.
You want to amend that motion?
No, I think that's... Do we really need a motion? Why don't we just make it an administrative matter?
It should, to me, it should be administrative. It's as the motion was set forth, with a lot of discussion of public safety, so Lynda, I would defer. If we need to amend it, we will.
So, I don't know that it's necessary to make a motion about this. The assignment has been granted. So, I mean, you know, you'll hear a report at the public safety meeting from the team that's been working on this.
Okay, so we're passing on to that. Number three.
Did you withdraw the motion?
I withdrew mine.
Who seconded it?
Randy.
So, you need to withdraw the second.
I withdraw.
Okay, and lastly, number three. I make a motion to review the recommendations for a comprehensive coyote management plan to be adopted by the city. I hereby make that as a motion.
I'll second it.
Discussion.
I would just offer to the new members of council and some of the members of the community out here, that the city, prior to this work on coyotes, the recent work, the city actually did draft a plan before it went forward, in prior times, two or three years ago, went forward to public safety, and there was no recommendation to adopt the plan. So, we can simply reignite those efforts. Maybe there is a will to adopt a plan now. So, you know, just for historical purposes, I just wanted to make you aware of that.
Do we need a vote on it?
Once you have the plan, which I think you've probably got a pretty, one that's really been written for you, and for us to consider, once you have the plan, there will need to be some sort of motion to adopt a plan.
At that time.
At that time.
And again, we've been presenting a pretty good one.
Yeah, I mean, for discussion purpose, there are, you know, I'm the, I'm the pro-do-something-about-coyotes guy, so it's appropriate for me to say, there are some things within the plan that I think we need to take a little bit of caution. Folks that came to public safety heard me say, just watch Jaws. I don't want to have a plan that says, let's all panic over coyotes and force short-term rentals and everybody else into, you know, advisements to people coming here to visit, that we have a problem that's unlike any other beachfront community, right? So, there's, there's a happy answer somewhere in here that says, let's be smart about it, right? So, if we adopt the plan as is without any changes to it, that would be accepting the plan as presented, if I understand it, right?
Correct.
Or, we adopt the plan, and tell me if I need to make amendments, with some consideration by this council for more deeper review to make sure that this is indeed the plan that we want to adopt. Because I, in fairness to other council members, I doubt everybody's read the plan.
Okay, I think we should send this back to public safety.
Yeah.
And so, I would like to withdraw my motion.
I will do so as well.
And send it to public safety.
Okay. Yeah, that doesn't mean we won't have a plan.
No, we're going to be...
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, back to...
Oh, I'm done. Oh, I forget, we're meeting...
We just finished coyotes.
Yeah, that was, I think that covered it, except to say that we will be meeting again...
Monday, April 9th at Fat.
There it is, yes.
Soon.
Yes, not that far from now.
Thank you very much, Chair. Public Works Committee.
I will be brief. Public Works Committee met on March 1st. We received input through the forum with the public that the two top priorities were sewer and drainage. These are under the jurisdiction of the Public Works Committee. We had discussed last year the need for additional staff at Public Works, and so this Public Works Committee has recommended that we hire a full-time maintenance facilities supervisor and a full part-time administrative assistant. And we will be passing those recommendations along to Ways and Means in this year's budget process. Our next meeting will be April 1st, 8:00 AM, and you're all welcome to attend. Thank you.
You get the goat star for tonight, thank you.
It wasn't hard.
Okay, Recreation Committee.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. The Recreation Committee met Tuesday, March 6th. We had citizens' comments. Levon Setimo talked about the Bark Park and the maintenance of it, and we're going to take that under advisement and try to see what we can do to spruce it up and keep it from being a dust bowl or a mud pit. Also talked about having other off-island dogs licensed. And right now, you don't, all island resident dogs have to be licensed, and so we don't know whether off-island dogs are licensed or not, so we're going to try to make, find a way to make sure that we know that dogs that are inside the park are also, have been vaccinated, and we can do that through licensing. Mick Smith spoke, and talked about basketball court time, and possibly opening up the rec center on Sunday afternoons. We're looking into that. And when I say looking into it, it doesn't mean just kicking it down the road. We're trying to find ways that we can make it happen, and make the rec center open on Sundays as well. The director gave her a report, spring softball, table tennis, and six-on-six soccer starting up soon, three-and-three basketball. It's been postponed because we're installing new basketball goals. If you guys didn't make it, Doggy Day at the Rec was a huge success, had a number of folks show up, and as a result, the city sold 92 dog licenses this year, when 60 were only sold last year. Some of the big events we have coming up are the Easter Hunt, which will be this Saturday. It starts at 10:00 sharp, and then our yard sale on April 14th, in 50 booths, who are to be set up for that yard sale. On our old business, we had continued discussion about the potential farmers' markets. We're still pondering around the location, the times, the vendors, the amount of vendors, so it's still a work in progress. Moving on, we had discussion also of the rec center open on Sundays, and we had consideration of our user fees. We're just trying to look at, trying to be comparable with other municipalities, make sure that we're charging where we need to be, not charging too high of a rate where we lose programs, and make sure we're charging enough to where we have a good return. We had discussions related to our Bark Park, and we discussed, and we had discussion about policies related to the message boards. Our rec center basically maintains the message board, and we don't have any policy in place of what can be there, who can utilize it, so we're going to address that. Our next meeting day is April 3rd at 5:00 PM. Anybody has any questions?
Hearing none. I'm not sure who got the gold star, you or Ted now, so I'll have the time to...
My clerk will show.
will show. Personnel Committee.
Personnel Committee met on Monday, March 12th. The first line of business was the election of the chair and vice chair. I was elected chair, and John Moy has been elected vice chair. We approved the minutes as read. We then had a discussion of updates on the personnel handbook. The staff has been working on this for quite a while, and we looked at various things that needed to be updated, things that had to be deleted to bring it up to the standards. Vote on motion to accept the personal handbook as updated passed unanimously. Councilman Moy moved to remove the city administrator's personal goal for 2018 based on previous discussions, was seconded and passed unanimously, and let me give a little explanation of that. This discussion of the personal goal in the city administrator's evaluation is normally decided in January. We are now almost into April, and no goal had been set. And we decided that based on the timing frame and what had been looked at in terms of a succession plan or a continuity plan, had basically been worked on already and could just continue without it being part of the goal. So, in fairness to the city administrator, we just eliminated that personal goal for this year so that we can give a full 12 months of working on the goal in the next year. We had a continued discussion of the continuity plan. We moved to discuss it, that was passed.
I think we need a motion.
Yeah, this was going back to that.
We have the motion to accept that?
Yes.
Okay. I move that we remove the personal goal for the city administrator for the year 2018.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, I was getting, I'm trying to make it faster.
Trying to get our gold star.
Yeah, I'm trying to get it going here, okay. Okay, then.
We're all friends here, we can.
I know, I know. We've discussed the continuity plan, I've already covered that. Then, a review of the city code, Chapter 3, Sections 1-3, 31 through 1-3, 36. This has to do with standing committees, the naming of them, the responsibilities that fall under them. This has not been looked at in a very long time, and we know for a fact that what we do on standing committees is not what it says in the code. So, we want to revise the code and bring it up to standards, and also look at whether or not the standing committees that we have are the standing committees that we need in this day and age. These were established back in 93, I believe, and at that time, it was basically departmental. There was a recreation standing committee because there was a recreation department. So, we're really looking at a global view of what we need to do and how we need to process during these times. There was nothing discussed except that we asked that the city administrator and staff come back to us with their recommendations of what standing committees should in fact be in place for the workings of the council as it is now, not as it was then, and we'll come back to you later with that. We discussed a timeline related to the public works staffing. This has already been through public works in terms of the needs of public works. We were looking at it in a different way in terms of looking at the entire department, looking at the job descriptions that we have in that department, and if they in fact, again, are what is being done for a director, for an assistant director, before we start plugging people in to do jobs that maybe we need to look more globally and find out what we need. We may need more than two. We may need more than just an administrative assistant. We may need an office manager. So, we're looking at it a little more globally in terms of changing job descriptions, how that is, fits into the budget, whether we need to outsource some things, because it's obvious that the amount of work being done by the public works department has increased, and we have not increased staffing. But I'm not so sure we need to put in fixed cost salaries until we know exactly what the whole department needs to look like. So, we do want to give more help, but I think we're looking at more of an outsourcing of that help rather than hiring at this point in time. But that will be talked about in the budgeting process. Then, we looked at consideration of changing the frequency of performance reviews. Right now, we have annual reviews, and John Moy has been a good resource in terms of what the current model is. And in making an evaluation be a learning process for an employee, the thought process today is that it be done on a quarterly basis or at least more frequently than annual basis. If you wait until the annual review, there's no time for them to change their behavior. So, it becomes a disciplinary evaluation rather than a growth evaluation. If you do it along the way, the goal is still the same. You don't change the goal for that, but you look at it in systematic timeframe so that in the first evaluation, if an employee isn't doing very well towards that goal, then you look at how you can help them attain the goal in the next frequency of evaluation rather than waiting to the end and say, you didn't do this, you didn't do this, you did do this. And it's not a growth process. What we want to do is make sure that our evaluations is to enable the employee to do the very best job they can and to identify what they need to do that along the way, not at the very end. So, we changed the thought process from having a quarterly review, just simply saying that we weren't going to look at having a more frequent review, and that has not been decided as yet, but that was the discussion. We asked that there be an audit of the Human Resources Technology Protocols and Processes in place, and our human resources officer is going to report back to us on that. The next meeting is Thursday, April 5th at 8:00 a.m., Carol. 8:00 a.m. We've had a problem with early meetings, so it is for 8:00 a.m.
Okay.
We move to adjourn. And the, I have also to report the January Swoop Stacks winners, and I'll go back to the recommendation in just a moment. January Swoop Stacks winners, general government is Marie Copeland, fire department Brandon Crisp, police department Officer Dylan Reynolds, public works Rob Graham. For February, general government was Winette DeGroot, fire department David Mello, police department Officer Tiffany Stucker, and public works Willie Powell. In addition to this public, I mean, personnel meeting, we had a special meeting in which we discussed the retirement of our Chief Buchanan after 37 years on the force, and the fact that he will be leaving us in April 13th. We received a recommendation from the city administrator that came from Chief Buchanan to name the interim chief as Captain Usri. Congratulations, Captain. Please stand. Does that need to have a vote? I don't believe it does, right? It's just an announcement?
I think you would want to have a motion to appoint her as interim police.
Then I will make, I will make the motion. I won't make you stand again. I will make the motion that Captain Usri be appointed as the interim chief of police for the Alapams.
Second.
Good, good. Discussion. I want to thank Chief Buchanan for his service to Alapam for 37 years. You've got some big shoes to fill on this one, interim. And, you know, and having Jeff to your side, I mean, we, y'all have done a great job in creating a great force, and we're going to miss Tommy, but I think he's going to stay in touch. Well, at least we'll see, watch his wife on Facebook, wherever they're at. Thank you. All right, now for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Congratulations. Okay, so ends your report?
So ends my report.
Okay, now, real property.
Don't worry, this is only about two hours. So, the real property committee met at 4:00 p.m. Thursday. Oh, I knew I would. Thanks, Dan. I think two hours is reasonable, no? Lost them all. Real Property Committee met 4:00 p.m. Thursday, March 8th. Administrator Tucker called the meeting to order and acknowledged that everybody was duly informed, and the first motion was for the election of chair and vice chair. Councilmember Ference nominated Randy Bell, myself as chair of the committee, seconded by Councilman Ward, and unanimously supported as Councilmember Bell as chair. Councilmember Bell then nominated Sandy Ference to be vice chair. Councilmember Ward seconded, and the vote unanimously supported Councilmember Ward, excuse me, Councilmember Ference for vice chair. In old business, Administrator Tucker reported that the Bulkhead Rehabilitation Project was underway. There was discussion with David Osgood from Johnson, Mir Moran and Thompson, the consulting firm, as to some necessary change orders due to discoveries that were made along the way during the project. Those items were reviewed with the committee. There was some modification made to them. The change orders were approved and moved forward on, and for those that haven't seen, we're actually making pretty good progress on getting the Bulkhead done, and it looks like the plans are to be done on time. On the change orders, we're still well within the budget. The original budget was 356,500. Even with the change orders, we still have, I believe, about, Linda, if I had help here, about $55,000 remaining in contingency funds on the Bulkhead project. Scott Kegel from Citizens Comments expressed concern over the conditions of the docks and was very adamant that many of these docks needed a replacement, not a simple repair. Jay Clark, owner of Morgan Creek Grill, informed the committee he was not going to replace his walk-in coolers at this time for the restaurant, the tour season's already begun, but he did request that the docks that had been removed from the lease be reassigned to Morgan Creek. On the subject of Bulkhead, Mr. Clark stated also that the contractor had agreed to be in construction. The only concern there was that we keep the noise down to a level that allows them to continue to operate the restaurant and hopefully complete all this work by April 15th, which looks like we're on track to get that work done. Marina manager Brian Barrigan addressed the committee relative to the condition of the docks and Mr. Kegel's concern, and did a nice job of explaining that just because those pilings look great sticking up above the water, the four inches underneath in diameter holding them might not be so good going forward. He's grinning back there, but, and we acknowledge this committee that we need to understand, you know, repair versus replace and be smart about this and not do cosmetic fixing of those docks, but make sure that we address fully what we do in a comprehensive plan going forward with that. There was discussion in old business of the parking such as, okay, anyway, that one, that one we've already covered. An hourly rate municipal parking lot, done. I get to skip that one. There was a request for clarification on the permitting for the replacement or repair of the docks. So, previously, it was reported, or appeared that we were moving forward with what became the Phase 2 of the Marina referendum. That was not the intent. The intent was to have a firm such as the prior firm or a new firm really go through the marina and advise us as to what we needed to do so that we could have a comprehensive phase plan that was affordable for the city that progressed with getting the work done at the marina that we all know the marina requires, and not just put Band-Aids on the dock issues at the marina. Needs to fit into the budget process, recognizing that the marina debt will be paid off in February 2019, freeing up money to reinvest in the marina. Councilmember Ferrance said the council was not going to look at the referendum plan but look at what must be done right away and how that additional work could be phased. Myself, the chair, called it, we need an executable phase plan. Since the season's rapidly approaching, we did state that we didn't think much work could be accomplished in fiscal year 18, but we would work with Mr. Barrigan about whom the city should bring in to do the assessment and then put the work out to bid. So, it was a move away from what had originally been proposed to just have ATM move forward with the work, but we will put this out to bid and obtain bids on behalf of council to get a comprehensive view and at least some competitive bidding on the work that needs to be done at the marina. And I believe, Linda, we're moving forward with that.
Yes, I just want to make sure that I clarify for everybody what the assignment has been given to the staff to develop a request for proposals for engineering services to come in and do this for us. It's not for actual construction work, it's for analyses and.
So, a request for proposal to go out to bid to find out what we need to do before we put out to bid for the actual work.
Yes. We're working on that now.
And Councilmember Ward moved for the staff to prepare a request for proposal, and that passed unanimously. On the discussion of unintended waterway docks, it was my opinion that the worst circumstance was for these docks to remain unattended as they had been under the terms of Morgan Creek Grill's docks, and that the easy thing to do for this season, we're pretty much in it, was reassign them for this season only to Morgan Creek Grill, and address more comprehensively the completeness of the dock situation at the marina and not just take Morgan Creek Grill separately at this time. There was an update on the front beach walkover and restroom renovations. About 75% of the walkway has been completed. Restrooms are at approximately 50%. The director was confident the contractor would complete the project by the end of April. In new business, considerations for the IOP marina. Site parking is related to the current lease and/or city ordinances code for 2018 season. Request was made of the marina manager to report for the April Real Property Committee the business count of the total site leases and agreements that occupy and/or operate on city marina property with a view to understand the capacity of the 5.123 acre site. And the marina manager's 2018 plan for residential and non-residential launch fees and seasonal launch passes, and any plans for potential resident slip availability. These are all items discussed during the referendum debates. The item still exists, so it's, you know, a request to understand if there are any plan changes at the marina going forward. It was acknowledged we have a crowded marina. We have pushed back still. I wanted to make sure that we're aware that, and we still have not addressed this, that, you know, some of the overflow last year was on 27th Avenue. Citizens continue to ask, are we intending to move forward with allowing the overflow parking into the 27th Avenue, which basically is at the rec center? So, I asked this chair that the marina manager would provide for the April meeting a business count, et cetera, and that we move forward with that and get a better understanding so that we can dress with a comprehensive plan and not piecemeal this. Some of this plan includes ordinance and code requirements for the restaurant, lease requirements for the leased tenants, including Title Wave, Morgan Creek Grill, and the other two businesses operated by Mr. Barrigan. Councilmember Ference moved that we have a motion for the IOP police department to present at April Real Property meeting plans to alleviate traffic control issues relative to the use of the IOP marina site, that we actually engage our police department in helping with the public safety issues that have been acknowledged at the marina site. Councilmember Ward moved for the IOP police department to present plans to alleviate traffic control issues. It was seconded by Councilmember Ference, and the motion passed unanimously. Miscellaneous business, all city tenants were current with their rent. It's a good thing. There was no executive session needed. The next meeting date is 4:00 p.m. Tuesday, April 10th. That's that. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, consider our some property tax to be.
Did I pass right over that?
So, it's because, you passed over it because it wasn't part of the committee report. If council recalls, you know, we received an assessment on the marina property, which is new. We have not seen that in the past, and so, it is necessary to divvy up that assessment among the marina tenants since all of their leases call for if taxes are assessed, then they will be responsible for the payment of their pro-rata share of that. And I think included in the packet was some information for you all about the way the county had sort of structured that. The city has to, we have to take it one step further because, as you know, they've sort of divided it up in the docks, and we have different tenants that are responsible for the docks. So, the city has to come up with a formula that would set out the Title Wave docks and their piece of the property taxes, the Morgan Creek Grill docks and their piece of the property taxes, and then Marina Joint Ventures piece of the property taxes, as well as the other things, the restaurant and the store. So, we would like to proceed with, you know, using the county's model and then using some square footage that we have in our insurance documents as to what's allocated to whom to move forward with getting these bills out to the marina tenants so that they can, I mean, it's a sizable bill, and so, it's going to be necessary for them to have plenty of time to. of time to assemble them.
And to the comment, the key point that may not have been caught is the city is not creating the methodology by which these monies are assessed, it's coming from the county.
The only, the only thing that we're having to do is that one section where the county didn't divvy up the docks as, as we know the lease has them. In order to be fair, we have to change that. And of course, as you know, the city did file the objection, you know, in accordance with the wishes of the group, and that is, that is continuing to be pending. We have, the bill has to be paid while that is pending.
Have they ever billed us before?
No.
What changed?
I don't know.
Greed.
I'm not, I'm not sure.
I want to bring up bad news. What's the chance that they can go back?
They've indicated that they, they're not going, going to go back, but that was a concern.
It was. It was discussed as well.
So I guess I want to check, do we need to have any kind of motion? Are we okay with just moving forward administratively on...
Right. You're good.
Yes. So your attorney's nodding her head going, yes?
Yes, that sounds good.
Okay, good.
So ends your, okay.
One thing.
Mayor, I always go back up, did you want to do a vote on the dock space being reassigned and just directing me to go ahead and prepare the...
So the consideration of Morgan Creek Grill's portion of the docks, which is the unattended docks for the intercoastal waterway for one year, that is a motion that I'll be making now to put it on Morgan Creek for this one year at a time.
Second.
Yes, ma'am.
So this will require their lease, I think, to be amended, but also the reason last year that it was amended was because we, at that time, we were hoping that those docks would be assigned for residents, which had been something that people had really asked for more resident slips available. So that's where that did come from, for the history.
Thank you. Would this be prorated?
So, so one of the things that I want to also make sure that everyone understands is that this will have to be passed by ordinance. So about next month, the city attorney will have drafted an ordinance for your consideration for this change.
And it will be a new separate lease.
That's why I was clarifying. Thank you, sir.
And so we have, we'll have to pass it by ordinance. So if timing becomes an issue and there's a need to do this expeditiously, then it may be that we will need to have a special meeting just, just for that. Maybe not, but we'll, I want you to be aware of that.
Okay, having heard that, we had a motion, a second, discussion, any other? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Okay. So ends your report. Go fast here. Reports from city officers, accommodations tax, no meeting, border zoning appeals, no meeting, planning commission, and minutes are attached.
Two sets of minutes you have.
Two sets of minutes are attached.
Well, there are now.
Reports from special or joint committees, none. Petitions received, referred, disposed of, none. Now, I hate to tell you, but we're going to slow down a little bit. Not too much. Bill's already in possession. I need a motion for a second reading of ordinance twenty seventeen oh seven. And we need a motion so we can discuss. This is all about the elevations, et cetera.
So move.
Second. All right. Discussion is, I'm going to ask Douglas to come forward.
He's waiting, so patient.
Yes, thank you.
And we're sorry, Douglas.
Missing your show.
So if you would clarify, you know, what we have to do, because I think we're going to have to amend what we have.
For the planning commission's right to go back.
That's correct. So before I get into the details of the code, the suggestion would be that you, that you all do not ratify the, ratify these ordinances at this meeting, but that you have a public hearing at your next meeting because things have been changed in, in these codes. So you would have second reading at your, your next meeting.
Douglas, real quick, and because one of the members of our audience was somebody who was concerned, as is one of our council members, this is, we heard our residents loud and clear, and we want to protect the houses that are existing on Isle palms and to help them with the future and renovations and stuff like that.
Yep. So, so if you're okay, I'll go into the details of what the changes are. And for, an update for the whole group, the way this is, the way this has come about is FEMA released preliminary maps that they've told us that they, they would, they're going to require that we adopt, and they're estimating that that would happen in December of this year. Those maps dropped considerably the elevation requirements for all properties and, in fact, took out large chunks of the island out of the floodplain entirely, which would allow folks to build right on the ground. The, there was concern about that, about the resilience of the community if houses were to be built right on the ground. The planning commission studied it. They forwarded a recommendation to you all that basically established a universal elevation requirement at fourteen feet above mean sea level. You all heard that last month or the month before. You express concern about the older houses and this issue of, these older houses potentially could become compliant, some of them, they'd be out of the flood zone entirely. And by enacting a higher standard of fourteen feet, we would be making those houses subject to that fifty percent rule. So, so the issue went back to the planning commission for study specifically on the older, not elevated homes, and they have made two recommendations. One, and I'll go over, go over on both, one is a fairly, fairly narrow recommendation that deals with those houses that would become compliant by virtue of the future maps. So, so these, this would be that group that's not compliant with the fourteen feet, but they are compliant with the FEMA maps. The planning commission is saying for those houses, do not impose the fifty percent rule at all for them.
Douglas, just point of clarity, so everybody understands that fifty percent is fifty percent structural change improvement over a five-year period would force you to the fourteen feet elevation, correct?
That's correct. If, if you were to spend more than half of the value of the house on the house, the code would require that you elevate the house to the...
Over a five-year period.
Yeah, yeah, that's the current. So that gets us to our second change. So the first one would say, if you became compliant by, by virtue of the future map, you no longer are bound by the fifty percent rule. The second change would apply to all houses that are below the current requirement, and it would change that tracking period from a five-year tracking period to a one-year tracking period. There's a little bit of discussion about doing away with the tracking period entirely, but the planning commission felt like that would be potentially unwise. And I would just add that it's important to keep in mind when you're talking about these, and the planning commission spent a lot of time talking about these, but there are certain minimum FEMA requirements that, that the council cannot modify those. So substantial damage, if your house is substantially damaged, you're below the required elevation, you have to comply. If, if you're more than fifty percent damaged, you have to elevate your house. So those bare minimums, the council cannot modify those. The only things that you all can modify are those voluntary standards that are above and beyond the, the minimum standards. And those voluntary standards, one is the five-year tracking, that's not a, that's not a minimum requirement. And then obviously, this brand-new fourteen-foot requirement is a voluntary standard. So that's, that's something that, that's something that you all can modify. So that's, that's the changes in a nutshell.
I probably am asking for a motion to amend the proposed ordinance that was recommended by our planning commission.
To incorporate those amendments.
To incorporate those amendments.
I'll second.
Second. Any discussion? Because I know Ryan talked about it, Paula talked about it, and we just want to make sure that we...
So the, so the amendment is to change it from, basically what you said, so we're going to have, so anybody who will now be compliant will, the fifty percent, I meant the...
Fifty percent rule goes away for that group of properties. If the map, if the FEMA map makes you compliant, but you're not compliant with the universal fourteen-foot elevation, the fifty percent rule goes away for you.
So what is, what is our cost savings from going from a five-year to one-year compliance? Or...
Are you, are you talking about the CRS?
Yes.
So there, there will not be any cost savings. That's a, that, the CR, Councilman Buchanan's referring to is, the city participates in a CRS program that, that ends up giving a discount to all of the flood insurance premiums.
That stands for Community Rating System.
Community Rating System, that's correct. The, there, that program moves you a class after you get a five, after you get five-hundred points. So there's a point system. If you get five-hundred additional points, you get an additional five percent savings. This, this change would result in about a twenty-five point reduction, but that would not result in a class change. So there'd be no, there wouldn't, there wouldn't be an impact in flood insurance costs.
So currently, we have, set for five years, which, with the current plan, it affords a city rather substantial savings. With the new plans, no, it doesn't. What, what would be the difference between...
Hold on.
On the CRS?
So, so it will, it will not result in a change in your premium cost?
Correct. No, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying with the insurance, with the, with the city, because before we had it as, you can only do substantial improvements every five years, right?
Right.
Five years cumulative.
Cumulative. But that put us in a different bracket where we had some, where the city saved some money on the CRS, correct?
That is correct, but, but the way the CRS works now, the new revamp system...
Correct.
This, this doesn't have the same...
That's what I'm, that's what, exactly, that's what I'm saying. So the new system, okay, now we can lower it back down. What is the difference between five and one and five and zero?
You can do more work.
Well, so, so the planning commission talked about that, potentially making it, yeah, doing away with the cumulative provision altogether.
Correct.
That would lead to a situation where an owner could come in and they would get a building permit for forty-nine percent on Thursday. They could then come back in on Friday for a separate building permit to do forty-nine more percent, Monday to do forty-nine more percent. I, I told the planning commission, it was, to me, it was creating kind of a, an intentional loophole that didn't really feel good to kind of be creating that people would be coming and saying, now, explain this to me, I have to come to you every third day and get a, a building permit. I didn't personally feel good about that, but the planning commission, in talking about it, felt like there was some, there still was some wisdom in, in reining in slightly those folks who may want to spend money on houses below flood, knowing that they're more susceptible to damage. So that is an option, and that's an option the planning commission talked about. Obviously, if the city council wanted to do that, you could do that.
And the problem that I have with that is the fact that one of the concerns that we heard from our residents continuously is the fact that a lot of these older homes are getting tore down, big homes are getting built up. And the fact is, you, somebody comes in to buy a home, there's, you can't add on to it. I mean, you're limited. You, I mean, you truly are limited just by the, the value of the structure. This doesn't tie your hands at all. I mean, all it does is extend it for one year. Somebody's going to go through and remodel their home, they're not going to want to pull a permit for foundation work one year, wait another year to pull a permission foundation for their windows. A window package can be thirty thousand dollars in a house.
Will be.
You know? Especially, and it will be because you have to have hurricane-resistant windows. So I, I don't understand, you, and when you, if you vote for something like this, you're going to continue to allow homes to be tore down and not have these folks who want to move in, families move in, afford a home and do not a substantial improvement because they only can do what's the value of the structure. I mean, they only can do so much as the, the return on investment is going to be. So I don't, I don't understand what the, why you continue to tie somebody's hands on, on expanding or doing a, you know, the, the price to do work out here is expensive. You know, you're looking a couple...
So your advocacy would be to remove the one year.
Correct. You know, you're at a couple hundred bucks a foot, you know, and that, that really, that really ties your hands, you know, on this. Whether you go through and add on a room, a sunroom, or front porch, you're done. People want to move in, they want to do their work, they want to get it done and get it out of the way.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but to, to his point, it's, it's the value of the structure, right? So if you really look at the property on these older structures, which, which I have, the, the value is in the land, right? So you're really limiting at fifty percent of the structural value.
But we're taking away the fifty percent, right?
One year.
It has to be cumulative for one year.
It changes. I think the intent here, and Douglas, please correct me if I'm wrong, the intent was addressing folks like Paula that, you know, in the event you have a storm, you know, you're immediately going to be over fifty percent. And if you're below that flood, you know, if you're at the new FEMA floodplain level to take somebody that's at a ten-foot level that FEMA says is okay and say, no, you've got to raise to fourteen feet, you've just pushed people off the island. You know, you can no longer do your home. So I think, you know, there was good intent behind this, in this one year, to Councilman Buchanan's point, you know, there's some merit to say that it still limits. I renovated one of these homes. I can tell you, I probably violated all this not knowing, had all permits, because it doesn't take long with windows and other things to exceed these amounts.
And all I'm saying is, I mean, even if you were to go through and let's say somebody wants to add on a sunroom, or somebody has a child, now they want to add on a bedroom, and then if you're still below flood, you have flood damage, fifty percent of the value or fifty percent gets destroyed, you're still going to have to elevate anyhow. So it doesn't matter how much they add on. And if they're, if they're below flood, they're only covered up at two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars anyhow. So, based on their flood. So whether they have three-hundred-thousand dollars worth or five-hundred-thousand dollars worth of additions, you know, they're only covered up to two-hundred-and-fifty. So I mean, you go and, you really put into what you're going to get back.
Can I, no, I was just going to offer a data point that I think you'll appreciate. I actually had one of the structures appraised, a J.C. Longhouse appraised in two thousand and sixteen, and for what it's worth, it was seventy thousand dollars was the structural appraisal. So that's thirty-five thousand dollars is, so that we know what we're working with here. I think that's helpful for the discussion.
You should have bought that, by the way.
So Douglas, what can we do to help our residents who have been here forever, who want to stay in their homes but yet want to improve their homes? And I really hate to keep on going back to our planning commission, but we want to protect our residents who want to stay on this island.
Well, so I think what Councilman Buchanan is saying, that's, that's about as wide open as you could do it.
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to amend, to make that...
Amend the amendment.
Amend the amendment, instead of one year to eliminate the, the timeframe.
I'll second that.
Very good. Okay, so, any discussion on that?
So you're going to vote on the amendment to the amendment, and then vote on the amendment, and then that's what'll go to public hearing.
Everybody clear on that?
Just one caveat to that. Douglas and I are still tweaking it, so there will be a couple more small changes in addition to the one that...
Amendments to the amendments.
No doubt.
I'll take it on the record now so that we have it for public hearing.
Right.
Okay, so not on amendment, the second amendment to get rid of this timeframe. All those in favor?
Wait, whoa, 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 whoa. But what Douglas was saying, if we do that, then it kind of opens the door for this permit and then a couple of days later, this permit, a couple of days later, and that's, that's totally...
But it's not going to affect us, though, with the CRS.
We, we do not believe it will affect us with the CRS now.
How often is that going to happen?
Oh, it'll happen.
I think it'll happen.
It'll happen a lot.
I mean, quite honestly...
Let me give you a senior, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Let me give you a senior, because I'm, I'm in the business, I have contractors do it. For now, you have, if you're going to do a remodel project on something like that, you know, that's valued at seventy thousand dollars, you can put thirty-five thousand dollars into it, and that's it. That maybe is a foundation or your window package. So now what it does is allow somebody to come in and say, you know what, I'm going to pull my foundation permit now. It's going to take four weeks to put the foundation, what have you, in. Now I'm going to go through and pull the permit for the framing, and that framing's going to be a certain amount. Now I'm going to go through and pull the permit for the electrical. It's down the road. It's not that they're trying to skirt the law, it's that they're just going to pull it at certain times now when it's prudent, instead of pulling the whole thing at one time and being, you know, and having it tie your hands and being cumulative.
Okay, I have a question then. Why was there a fifty percent rule to begin with? Wasn't it because you didn't want that much change in a property? And if there was that much change, then they had to raise it up.
Douglas probably answered that right.
That is, that is the intention. And it, and it does, and the planning commission talked a lot about this. I mean, it really is, to, to do what's being discussed really would gut the fifty percent rule pretty much entirely, and it would open people up. You know, you have a little house below flood in a matter of... You know, you have a little house below flood, in a matter of eight months, you would have an enormous house also below flood. So it does. I mean, it guts the provision, would allow you to spend really an unlimited amount, if you're patient enough and pulled enough permits in that month, to do as much work as you want. And that is, that's contrary to the spirit of what FEMA wants for folks to do. Having said that, though, you know, I think that it's a judgment on, you know, do you want to come down on the side of resilience, you know, and being flood resistant? Or do you want to come down on the side of preserving older homes? And it's just a judgment that you will have to make. I think the planning commission felt like going from five years to one year was a good balance, that, you know, to do away with a cumulative provision altogether was maybe too drastic, but it really is just a judgment. I mean, it's where you kind of place the value.
Isn't there a common sense element, that if you're going to build below the FEMA level over time and put substantial money in it, that's probably not, you'd like to think that contractors would be smart enough to say, "I'm not going to put $500,000 into a home, knowing that I might have this problem." This is really aimed at protecting residents that have these homes and want to do this.
If you don't mind, from my point of view, we're trying to protect our current residents who want to redo their houses. But more often than not, 80 to 90%, most of the people buying the properties out here are really taking the houses down and building.
Yeah, you're right. Most, yeah. People come in all day and they preface it by saying it's a tear-down.
We're trying to protect our existing homeowners more than anything else, who want to stay here and keep their houses and add on to...
Subsequent ordinance is address the other problem, right?
Yes, correct.
Right.
Okay.
So this just affects a certain group of homes because of changes in the FEMA flood maps that would now, where they used to have to abide by the 50% rule, according to FEMA, no longer have to abide by, because FEMA's changed the maps.
No, so there are two different proposals. One does away with the 50% rule entirely.
For everybody.
If you, no, just for that group that becomes compliant, which really is not going to be a huge number. It's going to be those...
That's why I was, how many homes would that be?
So it's the blocks between around Carolina, and it's the blocks between Palm and Hartnett. Any of those houses that are not elevated, and I don't know how many there are in there, but I don't think there's a huge number, those would have no 50% rule, because they're out of the floodplain.
According to FEMA.
According to FEMA. So they would have no, they would have no 50% rule.
And we were looking at imposing one on them.
That's right. That was, I think, kind of an unintended consequence of the 14-foot universal requirement, is it would have imposed one. But what we're talking about now is kind of gutting the 50% rule for substantial improvements island-wide. So that is a much larger pool of properties, obviously.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Not right now, I'm sorry. Yes?
I just want to make sure that, you know, we're not saying just because you can, you should. You know, that's one thing that, and that it doesn't make us responsible in any way for a homeowner or a contractor's decision to do whatever. I mean, we have no exposure, we're just changing this. I mean, if, you know, if we do get a storm and they do flood, just because we allowed them to do this doesn't mean it's in any way our responsibility. That's what I just want to triple-check, that we have zero exposure in doing this.
I would say that that's correct, but I think you should ask her.
You know what I'm saying? Just because you can, doesn't mean you should, but, you know...
I mean, the planning commission talked about this, that you just, you can't legislate in order to make people not do stupid things, right? But at the same time, I do think that we're going to be allowing people to do maybe things that aren't the smartest for their own sake. So, I mean, I do think, like Douglas said, there's kind of two ways to come down on it. I mean, one is for flood prevention and resilience and all those things, to make us more protected if we have another big storm. You know, the other way is to protect the older houses. Unfortunately, we just don't have like a historic property protected, you know, like area, like other, you know, parts of Charleston have. We had that, you know, if we were under that age limit or whatever it was, then that is an actual exemption from that FEMA requirement. But we can't say that those homes are in that type of historic area, that that's meant to, you know, that's supposed to be an exemption, like a preservation zone. So, you know, it just, it just kind of comes down. And I think the planning commission did do a good job of trying to compromise the two stances, and that's why they chose the one year.
We could get one more question from the council mayor.
I have, how many properties are on the ground level on Isla Palms? Do we have a ballpark?
No.
Okay. And did FEMA actually, I thought that FEMA was the reason for the 50% rule. And now they're not requiring that of any homes?
So they do require that you have this 50% rule, but they do not require that you have the cumulative provision. The cumulative provision, which we're talking about doing away with entirely, that is a voluntary standard. So they, you know, I don't know if it was knowingly or unknowingly, they kind of left the ability for communities to have this loophole.
Oh, I see.
But that is not, the cumulative provision is voluntary.
As Isla Palms has been imposing, the cumulative piece, and they did not have to, and now we're saying...
We may just do away with it, yeah.
Douglas, what were most communities doing as far as the timeframe? Because I think you, it was talked about, I just don't remember. Was it typically five years, or was it typically one year?
All I know is that DNR, so the DNR handles flood mitigation throughout the whole state. They were unaware of any community that did not have some cumulative provision. The example was made by an architect on the planning commission, that he did not think the city of Charleston had that provision, and it allowed this kind of, you know, repetitive permits, one after the other.
Anything else? Okay, on the amendment from Councilman Buchanan, to do away with the five-year to one year to go forward.
Zero.
Zero. Is there any questions anymore? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays? One, two, three, four, five, four, but...
You voted on the original.
Marie, did you see all that?
Or the nays? Do you want to clarify the nays real quick, everybody?
Nays, hold up your hand, please.
Okay.
Okay, going back to the original motion, which is, take...
Accept the amendments from the planning commission.
Accept the amendments from the planning commission, and that's it.
That's it.
So you'll want to vote on those amendments.
So...
I'm confused. You're just voting on the amendments, you're not voting on second reading. It's got to go back for planning or public hearing.
Okay, I just lost my way.
We're all, this is a tough one. We've had a lot of discussion on this. So going back to the planning commission motion, all those in favor, say aye. Nays? Here or not? Now it goes back to planning.
It's going, we'll go to public hearing. We won't have to go back to planning, but it'll go forward to public hearing with also some...
Couple more changes, probably.
Right, just some cleanup changes.
All right, I know you're all going to love hearing this. Do I have a motion to defer 8B, 8C, and 8D?
Just ordinance 2017, eight, nine, and 10.
Well, first, a second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye. Okay, E, second reading ordinance, 2018. Do I have a motion?
2018... Dash four.
Dash four, yes, concerning...
And I know you want that motion to waive the reading as well, or raise the oral reading.
Motion to waive the reading.
Waive, waive, waive.
Okay, having waived the reading, any more discussion about noise?
There are some amendments in this one since the first reading, and those include the specific holidays that were listed in the Sullivan's Island code. And then also, I took out reference to having to have the reference to the building permit that was included in that. That was something that I incorporated that was not in the Sullivan's Island model, and Douglas thought that we didn't need to include that. So those are the two changes that you'll see in the red line. We will need to amend this one, if you want to include this.
Okay, motion.
So you need, someone needs to make a motion to amend it to include those changes.
So moved.
Second.
I have a question, one question, real quick. This is modeled after Sullivan's Island, Sterling, is that correct?
Yes.
I saw, seen signs that says, "No noise or work." Does our ordinance say "work"? Like, what if somebody's like working in their house?
That's okay for an individual homeowner.
This is actually in our noise ordinance.
Right.
So it says, "Noise generated from construction."
Okay, so it doesn't have to do with...
As long as it's quiet work.
Right, very good, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Jimmy?
Yes, sir.
The only discussion and potential amendment is, it's been suggested by some residents to me that we consider just adopting the Wild Dunes Plan, which is not that far off of the Sullivan's Island Plan. It's a little bit more restrictive on Saturdays. It would give us one consistent island-wide plan. So for discussion purposes, I want to make a motion to amend this to reflect the Wild Dunes Plan, at least for discussion purposes.
Can you state exactly what the Wild Dunes is?
Yeah, Wild Dunes Plan is...
Do you have a second?
I'll second for discussion. I'd like to know the Wild Dunes Plan.
Yeah, that's, that's what the intent here is. The Wild Dunes Plan is regular hours, 7:30 a.m. through 6:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, excluding the following holidays, Christmas, New Year's, Memorial, Fourth of July, Labor Day, and Thanksgiving. For what it's worth, the holiday periods are consistent through, you know, Sullivan's and the other ordinances. Quiet work, no saws, nailing heavy equipment, et cetera, may begin at 7:00 a.m. All noisy work may begin after 7:30 a.m., Monday through Friday, and after 9 o'clock on Saturday. Saturday work hours are from 9 through 4. No Sunday exterior work is allowed.
Okay.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay. Any other discussion? Questions? Yes, ma'am?
In contacting, in talking to contractors, and I talked to several, they like the 7:00 a.m. start, I think we may have covered this before, instead of a 7:30, it helps with the traffic, with people coming. That was the main thing that I heard, and I think on Saturdays, to being able to start at 8 a.m., this is a group of people who likes to start their work early, that's when they're very productive. It works with their, for a variety of reasons, and I think we have to acknowledge that they're doing work for our residents and getting stuff done for our residents, and take that into account.
We have a motion and a second amendment.
I just, I like the concept of having an island-wide policy. I think, you know, the fact that we have one end of the island doing one thing and the other end of the island doing another thing, I think that has merit. I just want to say that.
Yes. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the amendment to mirror the Wild Dunes construction time?
The second amendment.
Second amendment.
Wait, what?
The Wild Dunes.
Okay.
Aye. I'm sitting here looking around, make sure there's nobody else talking. Any nays? One nay? Okay, now to the original, which is...
Original amendments were the changes that Sterling had made.
Right.
Since you saw it at first read.
But that's going to be changed because of the Wild Dunes.
Yeah, I think, so I think right now, we can just withdraw that amendment.
Because that's going to mirror, yeah.
And then...
And draw up the new one.
Just keep the amendments, and let's do second reading in April, so that I can get it informed, and also make sure that it says exactly what you want it to say.
Perfect.
So I don't think, just maybe withdraw that first amendment.
First amendment. So withdrawn.
Who's second?
I think it was...
And then that's all we need to do.
Okay.
And then defer until next month.
And then make a motion to defer.
And do we have a motion to defer?
Yes, we do.
You have a second. Any discussion? All say aye? Aye. Okay.
So I'm going to make a suggestion concerning that first reading, that's the next thing on the agenda, that the things that were talked about tonight, those changes, you could go ahead with first reading as it is, and then those changes could be considered for second reading. And that way, you don't have to get into all the minutia of trying to amend this.
Totally agree. So first reading by title, ordinance 2018-05.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, none? Aye.